My name is Wayne Franson, the chairman of Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting this evening. We will... Glad you're joining with us, John. Thank you. We'll start off with public hearing. There are two items on the public hearing agenda tonight. One is a consideration of changing our fence ordinance to allow fence lines to be placed along the property line on the side and rear of the property as long as the fence does not come forward of the front plane of the residence.
And that it doesn't abut a road.
A road, correct. On a corner lot.
Wayne, do we need to clarify what zoning this is for as well?
It's throughout the city. So any fence, it would apply to any fence throughout the city. It's not restricted to any particular zone. Our current ordinance allows this for a fence less, 42 inches or less. So that would not be affected, that would stay in place. It's just if the fence is taller than 42 inches, then this other application would apply. And secondly, the city is changing, wants to change the process for Appeal Authority, it's titled, the old Board of Adjustment, having to do with the review of zoning decisions in the city, not the zoning ordinance per se, but decisions that are, that come out of application of the zoning ordinances and variance, variances that the Appeal Board would hear and... Let's see, there's one other area, which I'm drawing a blank on right now, that this Appeal Authority would hear decisions on, on non-conforming uses. For example, a business that would require a conditional use permit if there was an issue that the appellant didn't agree with on those decisions, that this Appeal Authority would hear that. And the Appeal Authority will be a single person, more likely an attorney, but the critical part is somebody who's knowledgeable about zoning ordinances and those processes in the city. It wouldn't have to be an attorney, but most often attorneys are the ones that are most familiar with those things. So that's what the city is looking to change. We currently have a five-member committee that looks at, that considers these appeals, and that committee would be disbanded in lieu of a single party who would hear these matters. So those are the two matters for public hearing tonight. So I don't forget, we've received two written, well actually, three written comments. One from Tannen-Fujia, one from Megan Fujia, and one from our attorney, who the attorney drafted the ordinance that's out on our webpage. And from our review of that a couple of weeks ago, we felt that it needed to be, there's a couple of things that needed to be added to it. And so we addressed those to our attorney, and upon his further review, there were some other items that he felt needed to be included. And so he did a, basically a redraft of the proposed ordinance. I sent that redraft to all the commissioners. We'll talk about that tonight during our regular meeting. But for right now, those ordinances have been placed, proposed ordinance have been placed on the website for public to see, and we'll entertain any public comment that anybody wishes to make. So... And also for the record, I sent Tannen and Megan Fujia's separate comments to each of you as well to have. We won't read those in, we may discuss them tonight a little bit, but we won't read them in for the record, but they will be part of the record that we have. So, that said... Jody, are there any, I don't see any sign in there, who wish to make comment? Am I correct with that? Okay. Are any present here who wish to make comment? All right, we will go ahead and conclude the public hearing on that matter then, and go into our regular Planning Commission meeting tonight. Ted, would you lead us in the pledge? And Laurie, would you offer an invocation for us? Okay. Would everybody rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee at the beginning of this Planning Commission meeting and ask thee to please bless us that we'll be able to have open minds and be able to think clearly and keep the desires of the citizens as we make decisions tonight. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have to work in this capacity and to be able to serve our community, and we ask thee to please help us to do so. And we say this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Any attendants here who wish to make any public comment about anything? I don't want to be up... Okay. We want to move on to the next item. We sent out the amendments for a, we're looking to send them out for our November meeting, so they were sent out after our last Planning Commission meeting, so we'll look to do those tonight as well as our January Planning Commission amendments. I haven't got any feedback or any changes or additions for November 17, 2021. Make a motion to approve those amendments.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Same for our January 19, 2022 meeting. Make a motion. I'd say moved to approve those amendments first.
I'll second.
Laurie, second. Any further discussion on those? All in favor of approving those amendments?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda, November 1, is Proposal and Recommendation to City Council to Admit the Ordinance Having to Do with the Fence Setback. I drafted a proposed wording of that and sent it to everybody. I didn't get any feedback, but this is the way it would be worded. "Fences or hedges taller than 42 inches shall not be located less than 30 feet from a property line budding the street and can run along the side or rear lot property lines as long as the fence does not extend beyond the front plane of the residence." Your thoughts on that wording? I think there's other wording that could more specify what we want to attend there or leave it as is.
I like it the way it is, the way it's proposed, not the way it is, by the way it's proposed.
Keep it simple, okay, Severin?
Yeah.
Just for the record, our thoughts around that, as we previously discussed it, was to do away with the no man's land supposedly between the property lines. It would be approximately 10 feet that might not get attended by way of keeping it trimmed and keeping weeds out there. Also, if one property owner puts a fence up and happens to, has a tendency to give the one who doesn't five more feet of their property, they actually approach on the neighbors who put the fence five foot from the property line. It would avoid those kinds of situations. Well, the other thing that we would do is that we'd allow neighbors to coordinate building against between the two property.
Yeah, share the cost.
Share the cost, and then agree on what type of fence would be best for the... You see, the neighbors, the fences make good neighbors, the defenses make good neighbors. What, I still worry a little bit, houses that are on corners. You have the 30 feet, is that a balance to give a visual safety area for people that are coming on the side of the corner house? 30-foot setback. Because I don't know what's traffic, I mean, what they recommend from traffic to be able to see at the intersection.
Well, I mean, right now, depending upon the zone, on a corner lot, if it's an R1-2 PUD, you've got 50-foot setbacks. But if you're R119, it's only 30. So this is not going to be any less than what it would have been on a corner lot anyway. So I don't see that it, that it would, it should restrict that. I mean, it's going to restrict it a little bit, 30 feet versus 50 feet, but I think the 30-feet setback is probably sufficient.
If you pull up to an intersection, you're at the street, the crossing street line. So your vision really shouldn't be impaired very much from, if any.
Generally, I ran just a little number on this, because generally, when we do these for state agencies or whatever, we have to determine where they put their walls or setback sound walls and stuff like that on corners. It's based on essentially speed of the traffic on the cross street. So you assume that the car's going to stop at the stop bar of a stop sign, which is usually just back from the intersection a little bit. You're going to give them a triangle or an angular view far enough that an oncoming car has sufficient braking distance to stop if they pull out. That's basically how they determine that. And it's basically, you, it's a pretty easy, simple calculation, right? You just measure from where the car stopped, measure back up the street, and then draw a lot, a triangle line, and that's how far it has to be. Nothing in that zone can be installed to impair the vision.
Well, you've got not only the 30 feet from the property line, but you've got the street, there's an extra 10 feet or 15 feet on most of our property.
So is this saying, I was just reading this, so fences taller than 42 inches shall not be located less than 30 feet. So it's taller than 42 inches, and there's just, it's got to be 30 feet back from a road.
Right.
Correct. And that's also on a side, is that on a side yard or corner?
Whenever a fence a road.
So...
Which, for what we're doing, I mean...
The only concern I have is, is "but" the right word? Because to me, "but" means that. And we're talking parallel to the road.
Well, it's talking about the property line abutting a street, right?
Property line abutting a street.
Yeah, but it's still a...
Or along a street. Property line along a street side. Or on the street side, property line on the street side.
I know, no.
Abutting.
Oh, it's defined as touch or lean on, so touch.
Usually your property line doesn't...
Be next to or have a common boundary with.
If you've got real technical, it doesn't touch the street, right? Because your property line's setback, so much distance off a street.
So maybe it's not the same, 30 feet.
Along the street side, parallel to the street, or along the street. Or you could say abutting a street right of way, because it is right along the right of way.
The other thing I think, as I think about this now, where do we measure the 30 feet from? From the right of way?
Yeah, the property line.
Property line, which should be right where the right of way.
The property line should be on the edge of the right of way, right? So if we've got a 56-foot wide street, which includes the right of way, then that, and then it's 30 feet back beyond that.
Yes.
In theory. Our cities knew enough, they're probably not issued like Lofer Canyon, those property lines are out in the middle of the street.
Would, if we said a property line abutting a street right of way?
Yeah, I think abutting a street right of way. Because if you're right of way and your property line are joining right there. I think that would give it...
Yeah, because the property line is not on this, not abutting the street, but the street right of way. Are we comfortable with that? Okay. I'll take a motion on that then to board that to the council.
Okay, I move that way amend, section 10, dash 11, dash 8, B1E, to say fences or hedges taller than 42 inches shall not be located less than 30 feet from a right of way.
From a property line.
From a property line slash right of way.
No, property line abutting a street right of way.
But didn't we decide abutting meant meet?
No.
So where they come together.
Touch, lean on.
So where you're, it's basically saying where your property line touches a street right of way.
Next to or have a common boundary with.
Okay. Probably have, so running, all right, the running works then. Okay. I don't know whether I want to try that again or not. Shall not be located less than 30 feet from a property line abutting a street right of way.
Right.
And can run along the side or rear lot property lines as long as the fence does not extend beyond the front plane of the residence.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Severin made the motion, second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll put Larry down. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item, proposal and recommendation to City Council to amend, City Code 10-6, which is the Appeal Authority.
I'm sure a lot of language just to say we're doing away with the many and heavy break individual, but I guess it's necessary.
We're doing away with that whole section. So that has to be replaced.
I guess, I guess when we get to final ordinance, instead of being seven pages, because half of it's crossed out, it'll be back down to two.
It's three pages. If you look at your email...
There's a cleaned-up copy.
Yeah, Jody went through and took out all the crossouts from the old and put a new one out there. There still may be a little bit of tweaking to that as we look, we just got that today from the attorney, and so...
And the basic reason that we're doing this is because that's in connection or tied to the state code what many other municipalities are doing.
Correct. I wouldn't say many others, but some are doing, I don't know...
At least the small.
But it's allowed by the state code to do that. The one, one of the pluses is you have a person looking at that who's familiar with zoning ordinances and their application in the city rather than laypeople. And so that's one of the, that's the major plus, that somebody who is familiar with that and can make some proper judgments. I think in the past too, we've had situations where individuals have come before the board, the Appeal Board, with issues that have nothing to do with zoning. And so the individual now, the person who would be looking at these would, he's seeing them from all over, so he gonna, that person, he or she, is going to be familiar with what a zoning ordinance is and how, if it's the kind of ordinance then that's subject to being appealed, not, not the ordinance, I shouldn't, let me correct it. Not the ordinance itself, it's the decision that came out of application of that ordinance. Because zoning ordinances or amendments are not subject to appeal. Those are done through a referendum process if somebody doesn't agree when those ordinances are passed. So that's one of the distinctions. The, it's easier to get one person together for an appeal versus five also, and the city has the timing, the applicant to the appeal has, no, it's 14 days. We are, we changed, it used to be 45, and it got changed to 14. But that's to file the appeal, and then they're obviously want to hear, have the case heard as soon as possible, so those things can get resolved. For the, for the appeal hearing. Okay. A little, maybe Jody can shed some light on that. We have a number of variance hearings where people want a variance, and there's, there's a criteria also for variance. Variances that can't be heard.
Yeah, I got a variance. I had to go before you.
So those are more frequent, more common.
They were nice.
Jody, any idea of how many zoning appeals that we've had the last year? And they've all been from the same persons at this stage. So, and of all of those, they've all... They've been appealed or are being appealed, except for... I should say, except for one. They all are, okay. So the decisions of the Appeal Board are all being, have all been appealed and are at different stages with the district court. That's the Appeal Authority from the city Appeal Board that go to district court. And those are being heard by several different judges.
And that would be the situation in the future as well, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's still there.
If they don't like what the area officers say, they can still appeal it to district court.
Any other specific questions about the ordinance or how it would work? The plan is that the City Council will hold a public hearing, and whatever they adopt from ours and from the attorney's recommendation, that's what will be, may vary, that's what will be presented to the public from the City Council for their public hearing. So we'll have more of a specific wording and so forth with it at that point in time. And they may, from a comment that they get from that, there still may be some tweaking of the language and whatnot. Now, let me just share with you, I've tried to look at the, particularly Tannen-Fujia's comments, and they have, in my view, they have some validity, but as I've looked at it, I think they're covered in the wording of the statute because that, or the new, yeah, the new statute, because it applies to the zoning ordinance in Title 10. And the wording as given to us by our city attorneys include that, that this is an Appeal Authority to the zoning ordinances that are included in Title 10 or in Section 10. So Tannen wanted it to be more specific, and will certainly pass that along to our attorneys. They're the ones who have crafted this for our use. It's not been me or anybody else. And so we'll certainly pass along both Tannen and Megan's suggestions or thoughts on the matter to the attorney for any further crafting of the ordinance that they feel needs to be made. But generally, they're, they followed the city, excuse me, the state ordinance on the matter as they've, as they've crafted it into, into an ordinance for the city. So my, my recommendation would be, is to move it forward as we, as the, as version two, we call it, which we got today from our attorneys. Move that forward to the City Council for their further review and...
Consideration of public comment?
Yeah.
Because I was going to say the very question, where, what do we think the validity of those emails were, or common public comments that we receive via email? Is there some validity to them? I haven't dug in deep enough. I kind of understand what they were asking or wanting or requesting, but...
I think, at least with Tannen's, Megan misstated some things in hers.
Yeah, hers was a much longer version of stating some of the same.
So, but I think...
Maybe consideration, just say...
I think it's included in the current, in the way that the ordinance has been crafted. And if it hasn't, pardon?
Version two.
Yeah, version two.
Yeah.
And if it hasn't, and there's some difference between version one and two, but not a lot. Jody compared them today, and a little bit of difference, but not a lot. So anyway, if, if there are things there that the city needs to do that are to comply with the state code, we're not going to leave anything out of that. I think, again, my, my thought is that the way it's included in there doesn't... doesn't include Tannen's concern, but it's just not specific, uh, in the, in the ordinance per se, but it does include it. But our attorneys will look at that.
Certainly pass along to the attorney and let them. Yeah.
That would be my recommendation is to, uh, is to a motion.
I take it we're open for a motion?
Yeah.
Should we make an attempt at this because I've got kind of a long one here?
Okay.
Sort of. Correct me where I'm misstating, but I move that we, um, pass this ordinance, version two, along to the city council for their consideration, along with consideration of the public comment by the attorney.
Okay.
I can accept that.
All right. Any, any further comment on that? John, any, any comment that you have, want to make on that?
No, I'm, I'm liking the idea of a single entity with expertise, so I like that.
Okay. Very good. All favor of the, the motions that have been, motion's been made? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is the general plan. I want to start moving forward with that. I've, I've made some assignments for, for review of our existing plan and, um, would like to ask if you, if where the assignments have been made, to read through our existing plan and, uh, come back prepared in our next meeting. We'll have, um, kind of a lengthy discussion of that. And give us your thoughts as to, um, some things that we need to consider changing, updating, uh, having to do with those particular sections. Uh, and this is, this is, if you're uncomfortable with taking this assignment, let, let's talk about it. But what I've got is, uh, community vision for Lori. For land use, Severn. For transportation, Ted. I will take public facilities. For trails, I've got Larry. And also moderate income housing, Larry. Natural environment, Ted. Economic section, Lori. And I would take the annexation. So some of us have two assignments, just taking those sections. Also, let's look and see if, if, if we need any other sections. Maybe go online and look at some other cities and see what they've done and see if, if there's something there that maybe we're overlooking or need to give greater attention to. Maybe even break it out of one of these sections if we feel that, uh, it would be good to have its own section. This is very flexible. There's nothing cast in stone about what, uh, what it should or shouldn't consist of. There's a, there's a couple of kind of givens. One is a moderate income housing, but, um, it's kind of what our community needs as far as a, a guide for the next five years. Areas that, uh, we want to, uh, have emphasized and follow as the city moves forward, is further developed. Attention to existing things that maybe we feel is not getting the kind of attention that, that it needs. And, uh, so if you could each come prepared next time, and again, we'll probably take a major part of our meeting and maybe we won't get through everything, uh, just depending on time. But kind of come prepared to, um, to comment on those. Uh, and again, feel free to go on. Most of other cities' general plans are on their website. So they're available out there to look at and see as well as reading through our own. And, um, give us your thoughts and ideas on it as we kind of move forward with it. Oh, you know something? I'm just thinking here.
You're thinking.
Lori, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take economic from you.
Okay.
And John, would you take the subject of economic in our general plan and look at that?
Okay.
That report?
And I.
Get me to overlook you.
No, I, I'm fine. I just, um, yeah, in our park trails and recreation, uh, meeting last night, they did want me to ask as a follow-up for that master plan and, and if you're gonna want any use from them as far as a survey or anything. So that, uh, I'll let them know that you're starting the dialogue on that based on tonight. And then, uh, just as you see that, if you feel like you want the involvement of the PTR committee, let me know and we'll communicate that, so.
Okay. We'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
They make some changes as we go forward with this, but, um, I know they done a, a survey, recent survey. I know it hasn't been published yet, but it's likely that we would use that, uh, too.
Yeah.
Information and so forth, so. Okay.
Let me have our planning group look at this too and just see if they see anything missing.
Yep. Yes, use whatever.
We've got a planning group that writes these general plans quite a bit, so.
Things you've got available to you. Get started here, so. Very good. Thank you.
Can we go back? I just thought of something that, uh, relating to, uh, to the appellate authority. And Jody is probably the one that's gonna have to answer this. Is there something already in the schedule of rates? The thoughts about the cost of filing an appeal?
There is, but it will probably have to be, uh, it's supposed to be amended because they are going to have to pay for it.
Up to now, we've had volunteers doing that, so there's been little cost.
Yeah.
Uh, other than the administrative cost, but that's going to change now because we're going to be paying attorney, whoever to, for his time in, in preparation and in hearing that and so forth. So we've, we've got it on the radar that that's something that we need to look at as we move forward. And some will depend on, on a attorney. Every attorney doesn't charge the same thing. So we're not looking to make money on it. We're, we're looking to break even. That's what we want to do, so.
I had, actually in the last city council meeting, I had suggested that, uh, maybe instead of an attorney, we can consider an arbitrator, which would probably be less expensive. I did some research today. I went on the website for the American Arbitration Association and found out that the office that services Utah is in Phoenix. So I looked on their website and looked at the different specialties that they had identified. Then they had people, arbitrators that were conversing in, and there was nothing about municipal land use stuff. So I think the arbitrator, arbitrator option is probably not a viable one. And so the attorney that, that, uh, the mayor was, was looking at is probably the more viable option. If we can find one that has experience in dealing with municipalities and land use issues.
Okay. Good to know. And there are not a lot of them that are in this. There's a lot, there's a lot of attorneys who specialize in that, but not necessarily as an appeal board. So that's what the mayor's trying to go forward and see if, if there is an attorney out there who does that kind of practice now with an appeal, before an appeal board and, and talk to them and see if they're willing to take our city on and so forth.
I mean, arbitrators do that as a matter of course at hearings, but as I said, I could not find that this kind of specialty was identified.
There are not, correct me, Jody, if I'm wrong, but I think Jody's research has determined that there are not a lot of appeals in cities of this nature. We've probably had more than in the one year than most cities have in a lifetime. So there's not a big demand for, you know, for an attorney to take that, that on because of the infrequent occasion when that's used.
So we wouldn't be asking our current attorneys to do this?
No. And the idea.
That would be a conflict of interest.
Yes. And the idea is to get a disinterested party.
Yeah.
For, for that hearing, so. Okay, that, and take care of that question, Severn?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, uh, kind of the status on the development agreement. Ben, correct me if I say anything that, uh, that doesn't sync up. Summer Creek has suggested, uh, that we put that agreement, parts of it on hold temporarily. We can move forward with other parts of, of crafting the language in other parts, but it wouldn't have a finalization to it to present to the public or city council in total until a couple of items are resolved. Those, those items centered around, Summer Creek would like the city to abandon a portion of a couple of roads that they would like to bring into their development as private roads. And in exchange for that, uh, they would not, they would not pay us for that, but they would take on some financial responsibility that the city currently has for added development of a couple of areas of their, that's in their project that the city has responsibility for. A, a number of years ago, there was a bond take, uh, put in place for some of that, but it's been determined that that bond is not sufficient to cover the, some of the infrastructure work that has never been done yet in tho, in those areas.
This is a bond that Summer Creek?
No, it's a bond that Don Meacham put up.
With Thousand Oaks.
With Thousand Oaks.
With, for Thousand Oaks. That's part of Thousand Oaks at the time. And shortly thereafter, there was this, the, the, S- Summer Creek took over this property and, and was involved in that, uh, some of that process as well. So the city needs to do, and Summer Creek is going to help doing that. In fact, I haven't looked at it yet, but Summer Creek today sent a, kind of a proposal to the city. There needs to be some financial analysis done to see if it's in the city's interest as well as Summer Creek obviously feels it's in their interest because they proposed this. But the city needs to look at it and do some analyzing of it to see if, if the city feels that there's equity in, in doing something like that. Exchanging some of the public road property in, in exchange for the work that Summer Creek is suggesting that they do as far as further infrastructure work in these areas.
So are we talking about, uh, water lines?
Yes.
Sewer lines?
Yes. And rock line ditches primarily. Those are the, and, and roads. There's one area where road hasn't been constructed yet, uh, but that, that's probably the city has responsibility for that regardless.
That's Bear, Bear Hollow?
Yes.
With the condition that that road maybe.
We, we just, we need, city needs to look at the trade-offs and see if, uh, if, what benefit is there to the city in making that kind of an exchange? So I can understand Summer Creek's interest in it. City council has to approve that. There's a process that the city has to go through, a public hearing, to, uh, vacate our public road and, um, some particulars that way.
Is this, is this the end of eaglesness?
Yes. So I can certainly understand from a developer's standpoint, if there, if we, if this agreement is, is signed with them taking on these responsibilities and the city says, no, we're not gonna give up the property. So, uh, there needs to be a mutual understanding and agreement there before that gets incorporated into the development agreement with the required approvals. So it's gonna take some time to look at, to review and, and go through the process that's required for the city to, to, uh, vacate some of those, some portions of some of those roads.
Can I ask any question?
Sure. Okay, right? Yeah, why, why don't you, why don't you come on up here to take that mic there, Jen?
Uh, no, part of what Summer Creek owns is part of Thousand Oaks. Two blocks, as I remember, D and F. And part of that is the end of eaglesness, that you want to extend further down. And that's part of the land that you're talking about here in terms of ceding to Tha, to, to Summit, uh, for them to develop part of this exchange that we're talking about. What, those are, that, those parts of Thousand Oaks are R1-2 PUD, which is a very different.
Right.
Zone than R119 mountain overlay.
Right.
Would part of this, you may come in and ask to change it to R119 mountain overlay from the, from the planned unit development, the R1-2 PUD?
Are you asking if we, we want, um?
Is that part of what you're thinking about doing?
No, so the R, the R1-2 PUD, the, the only reason we would consider maybe asking for a different zoning or even applying the mountain villa overlay would be to get the shorter setbacks. Because the R1-2 is fifty, like you said earlier.
Right.
And in some of those lots, it just doesn't work. And so.
I mean.
I learned that one, yeah. I had to get a variance.
And so to your, to your question, we've, we've thought about that. We didn't really, we haven't gone down that road yet because we didn't want to add more on top of trying to get the development agreement and all that stuff. So maybe, um, we've, we've thought about, either we treat them individually and ask for a variance just on a couple of lots as needed, but if it's enough of them, then just asking for a variance probably isn't the best path. At that point, it's probably okay. Can we apply the mountain villa overlay? Or do we ask for a zone change to R1-2 or, excuse me, R119? And ju, just for information, the mount, our ordinances don't allow mountain villa overlay to be applied. Right. Anything other than. You're right. So we'd have to go R119. If, if we, yeah, if, if enough of the lots are such that fifty is, just doesn't work, we have to get, ask for thirty on all of them. At that point, it might make no sense just to ask for a zone change for all of them. Yeah.
Doing R119.
Right. Yeah.
All right.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are you going to connect Lofer, the two ends of Lofer together?
Um, no, so that's part of what we're, and I sent this to Wayne and, and it's on the, our master plan that we've shared. But the, I, our thought was, what we'd like to do is take Lofer where, where it crosses Summer Creek Drive. And then it curves up towards Bear Hollow. That's how it's currently plotted, right? We would like, that's why we're asking for some of that back is because instead of having Lofer go up and connect to Bear Hollow, we're gonna turn it in a little bit and make it a cul-de-sac. That's what we'd like to do.
Less than a thousand feet.
That's right. Yes, absolutely. But you're doing, your current, the current. the current situation with Lofer-- West Lofer is not part of your--
We're not asking for that back, no.
It's not part of your design, though, as far as--
No, that's, I think, gonna have to be treated--
Maybe separately.
Separately, yeah, because that's--
At least up to Summit Creek.
Right.
After that, it's different, but we still have yet--
There was that little section that we had to resolve.
Yeah. Any other questions? Did I--
Yeah.
--properly--
Yeah, so I know we were trying to push hard last week, and so we didn't get it to you until like an hour ago, right? But so that's our rough draft. That's our first pass at it, right? So look at it, you know, we realize there's gonna be back and forth to get it where it needs to be. So, you know, share it with whoever you want.
Yeah.
Get back to us. That's-- but that's our focus, you know, is like Wayne said, of being able to do what we want to do with those roads is significant enough to our overall plan, that if we can't do that, then we need to kind of go back and maybe rethink some of our plan before we do the final development agreement as a whole. So we thought it would be better to get that done first.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
How many lots are we looking at, Debbie, in Bear Hollow?
Lots, as far as--
Those are already--
Oh, yeah, that's all planted and done. So everything on Bear Hollow and Eagle Nest from, you know, the little cougar run, that's all done. We're not changing any of those lot boundaries. What we're looking at is future development. If you're-- at the end of that cul-de-sac where Eagle Nest ends, is blowing that out and going further down that ridge. That's-- we're looking at lots, and there's gonna be, I think, 40-ish, 45 lots overall kind of through that area.
And that's where you would want possibly to change the zoning?
Um, no, no, that zoning's fine.
Would be up where--
Yeah. If you can put a map up, I could show you on the--
Right behind you.
Oh, well.
Yeah, there's quite a few up there around this.
Yeah, everything-- like everything Bear Hollow going up towards Woodland Hills Drive, that's all D, Thousand Oaks, Platte D, and we're not requesting to change any of that. It's the portion of Lofer that goes down to Summer Creek Drive, that's Thousand Oaks F.
You can't-- This is what--
That's right.
Ben's talking about. Is this-- this is Lofer. This is Summit. And right now, it's proposed to go-- this is Bear Hollow.
That's right.
And you wanna end it there as a cul-de-sac, right?
Well, we'll curb it in a little bit. So it'll change where exactly the road is, but yeah, it's-- that's why we're asking to take that property back, because we'd like to redesign it.
Okay.
Well, have you seen what lots are selling for, right?
Yeah. One of my neighbors called about buying a lot.
We hope to make it up.
We were thinking about buying a lot.
That's right.
To Summer.
That's correct.
And standing in the house--
Three down from--
Developing this area.
So there's-- he's three lots down there. There's two lots between us.
Thank you for your question.
So he called.
So is all that property--
We're thinking the same thing.
It is.
Between us?
Yeah, down to the base of that slope of Lofer Canyon, where it goes down to Lofer Canyon. The city owns some property along that slope off of Eagle Nest. But yeah, yeah, we're right there. It's a very steep slope.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Any other issues that-- you've got a miscellaneous category there?
I wanted to maybe mention one. I brought it today when I was-- we were sitting there visiting with Corbin and Craig for a little while. And I don't know if it's already part of our final plat requirements, but if not, maybe it ought to be. And that is, like, a lot of times when we work with communities that do a lot of development or have development at all, part of the state's hydraulic modeling rule requires that the developer either have the city engineer or pay to have them incorporate their water system into the water model for the city to determine that they've got adequate fire flow and stuff like that. Or they have to model it and use the city system to model their system. Most often, like, we do this for Eagle Mountain. Whenever there's a development that happens in Eagle Mountain, they have their engineers send the water-- their water system to us. We plug it in the water model, run it, and just make sure everything's okay with fire flows. Because there's-- there's a huge discussion today on fire flows that we had, and there's gonna be some suggestions coming in the next-- Oh, oh, yes, so. So within the city, we have a water system, and there's two things. One is there's a requirement for the amount of flow that has to be available to fight a fire from a fire hydrant. And typically, our city has right now in their-- in their code, has a requirement. But what we're finding is that requirement was set quite some time ago when we had a lot smaller houses, and now we're getting these much larger houses, 10, 13,000 square feet homes, stuff like that. And so what was in there before is really not adequate for some of the homes that are being built now. So we've been-- so we've got a water model for the city, and we've been running some analysis determining, can we increase that flow requirement? And that's done-- it's done within the water system. So we analyze in the model every hydrant in the city to say, what can this hydrant flow? And then when new development comes in, the same thing's supposed to happen. It's supposed to go into the model, and this is actually part of the state rule for the Division of Drinking Water. It's supposed to go into the state-- or into the city's model, and you run your fire analysis to determine if there's enough fire flow at each hydrant within that development. If there's not, then you have to say, okay, you gotta upsize this line or reduce the spacing or something to get that flow. So there's gonna be some discussion coming to the city council next time about that and changing that requirement. But in that discussion, we got thinking, well, how do we really know when these developments are happening that they're meeting those requirements for the system fire flow without providing that information before they build it?
And you probably don't because there is following whatever pressure is there for the hydrant.
Right, and normally, like, our city, you know, eight-inch water line is, you know, typical. You put around in the city, and that's what most developments put in, is eight-inch water line around here. And that's probably sufficient, but you don't know unless you just run it through the model to make sure. We did something when Summer Creek looked at kind of redeveloping down by the-- down in their development there by the clubhouse, you know, we ran it through the model, just say, yeah, okay, this works. And that should happen with every development. So--
Did we do it with Robert Nelson?
We haven't done it with any Robert Neltsons. And that's where this kind of came about, as we're looking at changing these requirements, because it's gonna go-- we're talking about-- there's gonna be some discussion on increasing that requirement, that fire flow requirement.
Does the altitude change affect-- so since Robert Nelson is way down on the bottom, and the water's way up on top, that doesn't-- is just that elevation gonna add to the pressure that's down at the bottom?
Yes, in a way, because we've got-- we've got a set of-- there's PRVs that go down-- communities down the hill, because your pressure, when it gets so high, you gotta cut the pressure and feed the next pressure zone, or else you're blowing everyone's-- so it depends on where his development is in that particular development in relation to the PRV. Because most of the PRVs are set at 50 to 60 pounds on the outgoing side. So if you're near a PRV, it could be that on the downstream side, it could be 50, 60. If you're near a PRV on the upstream side, you could be 100 and something. So it kind of depends on where you're at in relation to the PRV. Not that I'm aware of. And so that got to be-- so anyway, it got to be discussions. Is this something we need as a planning commission to look at as part of the requirements? Most times, like in a lot of the cities we do this for, it's a requirement of the final plat approval. They have to submit their water system to the city to be-- or they have to take the city's water model, and we-- which most cities don't like to do, because then you get passing around there, it gets messed up. So they just submit their water system in a certain format, plug it into the model, run it, make sure everything's okay. Or if not, let them know, this is what you're gonna have to do to meet the requirement before you get final plat approval.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the city can set its own standard, correct?
For fire flow, yes.
So it's-- it's not a-- there's not a state figure that we have to reach, but we want to make sure that, from a city standpoint, there is sufficient wherever that--
Hydrant.
Hydrant measurement is to address the--
Right. Yeah, so we went through-- I sat down with Craig today, and we went through the IFC and looked at-- because it's called-- it's a minimum level of service that the city has to establish, right?
That's what we've kind of used in the past.
And, yeah, and our level-- yeah, and our level of service before was, and not to get too specific, but 1,500 gallons a minute for two hours. So you have to have available to hydrant. And that's for homes up to 3,600 square feet. You know, obviously, our homes now are far exceeding that. And so we've got to look at revisiting that requirement, because now, if that happened to one of these newer homes, you know, we're gonna run out of water real quick. And when you live in an urban interface community, there's also other provisions to double that requirement, because you can-- if it's like, for example, in these larger homes, the requirement's like 3,000 gallons a minute for three hours. Now, if they have fire sprinklers, there's a 50% reduction you can consider, so you're back to 1,500. But when you're in an urban interface, you also can double that, because you may also be fighting the forest while you're trying to fight the house. So bottom line is, it's gonna go up just because of what's being built now. It's got to. So that's some discussions we've been having, and so the thought was, do we-- you know, as a planning commission, maybe add that to our agenda as a topic to discuss about that requirement as part of the plat approval. And just-- so we're comfortable that these developments are being built in compliance with our code.
Yeah, no, good point.
So even in proceedings in Summit, as we go through the plots that have not yet been approved, then that would be a time even for current developing subdivisions?
Yeah, yeah. That would be-- before they get final plat approval, it would have to be verified. And it's really not that huge of an effort. I mean, we did it before for Summer Creek, and they sent us their water system. We plugged it into the model, took a few hours, and we ran the analysis, and everything checked out okay. It's usually not that big of an effort, but depending on the size of the development. It's just-- it's also--
I think the city's realizing that we need to not use a minimum standard, that we need to elevate that some as we go forward with the digital development in the city.
And is this what has something to do with, like, a rating for the city as far as our insurance?
Not this-- not really. I don't know if this would help with any insurance rating. That has to do with some of the ISO and stuff like that, which is-- and I don't understand all of that, but I just know it's kind of some weird deal. It has nothing to do with anything we do, but--
Could still be a second.
Yeah, certainly, certainly. And the minimum-- so the state has a minimum that if the city has nothing else, this is your minimum. But each city and their fire marshal or fire chief can set what that standard should be for that community. And that's what we've been talking through now, and, you know, we really need to revisit this because of the size of the homes that are being built in the community. And--
Imagine, I just think back to when I lived in Northern California, and Oakland had fires. I mean, there was no way that the firefighters could keep up, because it was just one home after another. I mean, it was, you know, a mile or two miles worth of homes were just all wiped out.
Yeah.
Well, that's the concern here. You gotta-- if you got a fire in a home, you put all your resources there, because as soon as it gets, you know, into the weeds, then it's just-- it's almost an impossible challenge to fight it. It's just gonna spread. So-- Good to know. I think-- I agree. I think that-- I mean, we-- you guys are involved with the study and doing that, but I think it's certainly something that we need to add to a checklist to make sure that that is being properly addressed--
Yeah.
--in these new-- in the developments as they go forward.
And it is-- it's also a state-- the state's, so about three or-- it's probably been five years ago now, or so, they come out with what they call the hydraulic modeling rule, which is what that entails. And so it's also complying with part of the state requirements.
Thank you. Anything else that--
I'm adjourned.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very well.